Commissioner Nettles, can we do an audio test? Commissioner Nettles, can we do an audio test?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we can hear you. Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay. Good. Good.
Do you think we need it? Do you think we need it? Throw it on me. Throw it on me. Bobby Anderson of Senior Consultant with USI. We've worked with Brazos County for many, many years and we appreciate, appreciate the relationship with you. To my right, I have Brenda Koss, VP of Strategic Accounts. And unfortunately, Phil Adams wasn't able to make the meeting today. Table of contents, we... It's got a time limit on it. Talk a little bit about USI, some of the emerging trends that we're seeing in healthcare. We'll discuss Brazos County's claims experience. We'll look at the medical and RX claim projection, contribution and affordability. Dental, dental, dental claims projections, contributions and 2025 benchmarking.
May I enter?
Jack, real quick, Bobby.
Yes, sir.
I just want for the crowd to know that visually Commissioner Nettles is with us. Audio, he just will not be visible on the screen until after the presentation. So, thank you, Commissioner Nettles.
Come here.
A little bit about USI, we're the sixth largest privately held insurance broker. Roughly $3 billion in revenue. We have over 210,000 employees and we have over 150 years of consulting experience. We specialize in employee benefits, property casualty, personal risk and retirement consulting. The network is the team that works with Brazos County, myself, consultant Bobby Anderson and Phil Adams. Brenda Koss is account manager, helps with day-to-day issues. Tony Sanchez is the underwriter and actuary on the account. Wendy Carmichael is our risk attorney to help keep you guys in compliance with the ever-changing laws. The wellness consultant is, sorry, is Alex Fernandez. Com consultant is Jim. Pharmacy consultant is Dominic Vu. We have the BRC Benefit Resource Center for your employees to call with any issues they may have. HR technology and if you're ever interested in retirement consulting is Matt Arnold. Some of the things we're seeing in healthcare trend, medical trend has actually increased over the last few years. 2023 is, 2023 is about 5% annually. 2024 is about 5.5%. We're seeing trend of about 7.5% coming into 2026 year, into 2026 plan year. What's driving the cost is chronic disease, mostly cancers. The prevalence of cancers is on a rise. We're seeing more and more cancers in the marketplace. RX trends, RX trends continuing to grow. Drug costs are getting more and more expensive. They're growing around 12% a year. Specialty drugs, a lot of doctors are switching the brand in generic drugs to a specialty medication, which is driving the cost. Specialty medication is about three to five times more than a regular drug. We're going to see more of that coming into the year. Positive note is biologics and biosimilars are rolling out into the marketplace. They're about 88% of the cost of like CUMERA, right? Biologics are coming out, which is going to reduce the cost, which is one of the positive things that we are seeing in the marketplace. Projected healthcare costs, we're seeing around a 10% increase. The nation is seeing around a 10% increase in healthcare costs for 2026. Brazos County is running well, so I just, I want you to know that we're not expecting a 10% increase to your budget for Brazos County. Employee contributions, we're seeing about a 5.9% increase. Employees, employer groups are contemplating about changing the employee contributions and plan designs. And on a block of business, we're seeing about a 10 or 20% increase on a year-over-year basis. On a positive note, Brazos County is running very, very well, right? We're sitting in a surplus of about $285,000. For 2024, we budgeted 20 million point, about $20.7 million. Our net claims cost in 2024 was 15 point, or excuse me, $16 million. We were 77% of the actual budget, so we ran well below budget, which accumulated a pretty good surplus, right? Our average employee count was 1,058. And if I move to 2025, our budget, year-to-date, that's through May, is $8.7 million. Our net costs, all claims, rebates, et cetera, is 8.3. We're running at 95% loss ratio through May. As you can see, our cost on a P E P M basis, per employee per month, has actually increased 14.9%. We're projecting by the end of the year that you, that Brazos County runs at 88.8% of the budget. So, we're going to see a favorable year this year as well, based off the claims experience through May and looking at this on a rolling 12. Number of large claims, 2024, we had 21 claims, 50% of the stop-loss. We had 11 claims over the individual stop-loss and the claims was $4.76 million, which was reimbursed back to the county. And 2025 year-to-date, we have eight claimants, 50% of the stop-loss and we have two claims that have been reimbursed at $1.4 million, right? The claim count's down a little bit this year, but we're, we're doing pretty well. When we look at that, how the plan is performing year-to-date, some of the areas I would like to focus on is the budget versus the net cost. Similar to what I spoke on the last slide, $8.7 million and the net plan cost is 8.3. $395,000 surplus. Employee contributions is 1.13 million. And the employer expense, Brazos County's expense is 7, 7.2 million. The plan is paying 80%, 86% of the cost. Guys, that's very favorable in the marketplace when we look at counties. That's very good news, right? For the 2024 plan year, just to recap, I like to focus right there on the budget. 20.7, ran at 15.9. We had a surplus of $4.7 million. We received about $1.26 million in rebates. This was with TAC last year and this year, we're expected to receive about $1.4 million, $1.5 million from TAC. If we look at a rolling 12 claims, this is just taking the last 12 months of claims. Our budget is sitting at 20.893 million. Our net cost, our net cost is 18,021. We're in a surplus of $2.87 million for the county. In this scenario, the county has, the employees pay $2.7 million. The employer expense is 15, 85% contribution. This is a trend report on a rolling 12. This is kind of lets us know how you're running from the previous 12 months. We are seeing a slight increase in claims. We're trending about 0.7% higher than we did a year ago today. This is just claims, just looking at your claims, right?
Bobby, that's through May, not June.
Yes, sir, that is through May. We will not have June data until about the end of this month. Historical cost summary, and we break this out on a P E P Y, per employee per year. 2023, our budget, 19,045. Our total cost was 17.1. 2024, 19.5. And then we ran at 15,860. And then projected, as you could see, projected is 19,514. And we're projected to run about 17,336 on a per employee per year basis. Enrollment, enrollment has seen a slight increase. As I mentioned on the, the observation slide, is your employee count has gone from 670 to 686. This does not include contracted employees, temporary employees or anything like this. This is full-time benefit eligible employees, right? Employee plus spouse is down slightly. Employee plus children is up, 176. Now, we have 197 employees that are covering their children on the plan. And employee plus family, we're down, we had 100, now we're at 87. Favorite slide, I love the alligator chart, right? This is annual trend. If I look back to 2021, if we used annual trend and just trended your claims forward, and then the green line is Brazos County, how you trend. We're creating an alligator mouth, which is good. We don't like that green line to be above the trend line. That means, got a lot of work to do. 2025 claims, looking at the large claim report. As you can see, we have roughly eight claims greater than $100,000. We have two claims that have exceeded the stop-loss, where you've received reimbursements at $240,000 and $42,000. It's a spouse and a subscriber. And the diagnosis is on the right and then the plan design. Claims greater than $200,000 represents about 8.8% of your spend, was 683,000. Claims between 150 and 199 is about 2% or $155,000. And claims between 100 and 149 is 602, 7%. Other claims represents about 81.5% of your claims are $6.3 million. Which gives us our total claims is $7.7 million. Some of the drugs that we are seeing as our drug expense, and this is drug, top drug report, this is top drugs by pay. These are going to be your more expensive drugs that we're seeing in the, on your plan. And this is, I call them good drugs. They help people stay healthy, right? As you could see, roughly 1.3, 1.4 million dollars in expensive drugs and $2 million in other, oh, excuse me, $454,000 in drugs, the good drugs. You, you have a lot of expensive prescriptions on the healthcare plan. Going into the projection for 2026, we're projecting a decrease in your current budget. That's minus a decrease of 6.10%. Our, our recommendation is to keep the budget flat. And the reason we say keep the budget flat is because what we're seeing in the market, the cost drivers are increasing, trend is increasing. We're seeing more individuals needing healthcare. I call it the COVID hangover. I don't know if that's true, but that's what we're seeing is just across the board, claims are starting to increase across the board.
The top chart illustrates what your current employee contributions are today and what you actually budget for your health plan. And then the bottom, it's just reflective of the minus 6.1, which of course, we're not recommending you do that. So, that would, would show the employee contribution staying the same and the employer budget reducing to 6.1. But I think we should stay at least at the top level up there. And then plus whatever you would like to do with employee contributions.
Affordability test, just to put on record, the most that we can charge an employee for employee-only coverage is $210.83. That's the most your employee-only contribution can be, to be affordable, affordable under the Healthcare Reform Act.
And you're currently at 138, so you're in good shape. So, if you wanted to increase that wellness, $75 penalty or award, however you want to phrase it, you have room in there. So, the dental is calling for a 21% reduction after we do the underwriting here. You know, last year, we had an increase actually of about 14%. So, this year, we're thinking maybe we, we kind of split the difference and maybe go with a 10% reduction. Go ahead and give them that reduction because your employees are paying for that benefit. So, we do, on the next slide, we have the contributions model showing the 10% reduction to your employee cost. And the, the last column illustrates what the difference is per pay period, that that's, they will be saving.
Benchmark data to share with you, Brazos County. Here, the actual value is 82%, meaning the plan pays for every dollar the plan spends, the plan pays 82% of the cost. As you can see, county government, city government, and then the southwest region, as you guys are right, Brazos County is right in line with the counties. And then your contributions, as you can see down here, are close, not on employee, family, but very close on the other tiers. Yes. With wellness credit.
Yes, that's right.
That's it. Any questions?
Commissioners?
Bobby, the only, the only problem I see is that we're only getting 75% rebate on our prescription drugs through Texas Association of Counties. And if we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield on the medications, we'd be getting 100%. So, I guess my question to staff is, last year, we were at 50% rebates from TAC. Then we went to 75%. What's the, what was that difference dollar-wise between 50% and 75%? And that'll tell, that should tell us what, what we're leaving on the table if we don't have 100%.
It's roughly $250,000.
Okay.
Right? Between the 50 and the 75% and the rebates you're receiving. And then TAC takes 25% to negotiate the drug program on your behalf.
Well, that's wrong. I mean, if Blue Cross and Blue Shield does it for, if they give us 100%, then why wouldn't we be with Blue Cross Blue Shield all the way through? Why, why would we even need TAC? We pay, we pay, I don't know what we pay to be a member of TAC. I'm sure it's substantial. But we're leaving money on the table that we shouldn't be leaving on the table.
I don't disagree with you. I do know that, that we were able to receive a very favorable stop-loss renewal from TAC last year, considering the claims that did help offset the cost. So, there were some benefits to it, but yes, you're receiving 75% of the rebates, tax taking 25%. They're using that 25% as administration fees. And what they do is they negotiate the rebates with that 25% on, they do a lot of negotiation through ESI and the drug manufacturers to maximize the rebate. So, yes, you're paying TAC administration fees possibly, and then they're taking a percentage of the rebates. That is correct.
Can we hear that again?
They're also paying the PCOR fees for healthcare reform.
Paying what?
The PCOR fees, patient-centered.
It's a tax requirement, 720 tax requirements. It's like 54 cents on a belly button, which is probably roughly around ballparking under $10,000.
So, yeah, they get, we give them 25%, but they're also using that money to negotiate other benefits for us, correct?
That is correct.
So, so this money, we would have to spend one way or the other, maybe from a diff, through Blue Cross Blue Shield. Because I'm on Blue Cross Blue Shield, it, stuff is going up, everything's going up.
Yeah, I, I would say that you probably could maximize your rebates being with a, a different vendor where you'd receive more than 100%. There are some benefits with TAC for counties. Brazos County is one of the largest groups in the TAC organization, so they're benefiting a lot from Brazos County.
And I guess my, my question is, how many years did we go where we only received 50% rebates from TAC? Just one year? So, what was it before that, before that one year?
We had a separate stop-loss contract altogether.
Okay.
It was exceptionally high and TAC was able to beat it even with taking in the rebates into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nettles, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, we just wanted you to know, we didn't forget you.
So, to summarize, Commissioners and Judge, you have this sheet in your.
So to summarize, Commissioners and Judge, you have this sheet in your packet. This is what USI and HR is recommending for 2026. Again, it'd be no change to the county contribution, no change to employee medical premiums, keeping the $75 discount the same, and then a slight reduction in employee dental fees, because dental is 100% employee-paid, the county does not contribute to that. So, that's the recommendation.
Why, why can't we demand from TAC that we get 100% rebate?
That can be something, as we discuss the TAC renewal in the next few months, that USI, ourselves, and TAC can try to negotiate.
I think that's vitally important. No matter who we're with, we ought to get 100%.
Understandable.
Bobby, Brenda, anything else to add?
That's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners, any last questions? Commissioner Nettles out there and...
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Bobby, Brenda, thank you for your time, Jennifer, Rayanna.
Thank you.
Call for Department Heads and elected officials' input and concerns regarding insurance premiums and contributions.
Do you have any kind of order?
Do have a list. All right, moving to agenda item number four. Presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 county budget regarding retirement plan, the TCDRS.
Correct, hello again.
Hello.
We'll be using this document in your packet to discuss TCDRS. At a high level, TCDRS performed very well in 2024. They do smooth out any sort of returns or losses they get in the market. Overall, we are required to pay 14.38% of our payroll. Historically, we have been paying the elected rate, which is slightly over the required rate, in an effort to increase our funding of TCDRS. Did you get, okay, just making sure. So if you look on page three of the plan assessment, you can see our historical contributions and what our funded ratio has been. So 2021, we were at an 83% funded ratio. That increased to 84.2 in 2022, 84.9% funded ratio in 2023, and then in 2024, 85.9. So we are slightly increasing that funded ratio, which has been our goal for the last few years. So for, like I said, for 2026, our required rate is 14.38. The recommendation is to keep the elected rate at 17%. Any questions?
Commissioners? No, sir. No, continue.
That's it. That's it, reducing the rest. Okay, any departments or electeds need a comment?
Any departments or elected, comments on retirement plan? Jennifer, Rayanna, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Presentation, agenda item number six. Presentation and discussion of fiscal year 2025, 2026 county budget regarding the following. A, cost of living adjustment, and B, merit allowance and merit policy.
I'd like to ask for a 10-minute recess while I get the table moved and the documents turned up on the screen real quick, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Okay.
This workshop will have a 10-minute recess. It is 2:23.
Good afternoon. I'd like to make a note that we do have Commissioner Nettles on TV land or computer land. We are having a little difficulty on pulling up some documents at this moment, so bear with me. But first, I'd like to thank everybody for attending this wonderful workshop. I want to speak with you briefly, but candidly, about a topic that affects each of us, both professionally and personally, cost-of-living adjustments, also known as COLA. Our county's greatest strength is in its roads, buildings, or equipment, as to people who serve here every day. They're the ones who keep our neighborhood safe, our courts running smoothly, our records accurate, and our residents cared for in the times of need. Without them, none of the county's essential services would function. Over the last year, inflation hasn't taken a break, neither have our employees. While the Consumer Price Index shows an average 4% increase, many core living expenses, like housing, groceries, and healthcare, have risen even faster, putting a real strain on family budgets. A 4% cost of living isn't a luxury, it's a necessity to keep our employees above water and our workforce competitive. Neighboring counties and cities are actively investing in their staff. If we don't keep pace, we risk losing experience, highly-trained employees whose knowledge can't easily be replaced. Turnover costs, sorry, turnover costs us in more ways than just dollars. Disrupt services slows down projects and undermines disability residents expect and deserve. By proposing this COLA, we're not only protecting our employees' livelihoods, we're making a smart financial decision for taxpayers by reducing future turnover and training costs. I fully recognize that we face difficult, difficult choices every budget cycle, but investing in people who make Brazos County work should be a top priority. For a fair COLA demonstrates that we value dedication and loyalty, and it directly benefits every resident who relies on county services. I respectfully ask that you stay with your employees by proposing this adjustment. At this point, I'd like to go over some of the data, how I arrived at this 4% cost of living. After this presentation, they will be uploaded to the workshop for the public to see. As well, I apologize, I'm unable to put it up to the screen. You will look at this document, which is called a Living Wage: Calculation for Texas. For the last couple of years, we present the same information. That way, information's not skewed or changed. I use this website put out by MIT, based on living wages for our area that's compared to USA, Brazos County, and then I make sure I show what our lowest wager is personally for an employee that works for Brazos County. For zero children, for one adult, the living wage for US is $21.82. Living wage for Brazos County, $20.27. Brazos County's lowest wage budgeted is $17.98. The poverty wage, wage, $7.52. Minimum wage, $7.25. Guaranteed that this proposed 4% cost of living will not bring us up to the living wage for Brazos County, but it's going to get us a little closer. The next sheet you're going to see is the weighted average for five years for the SSI, which is Social Security, CPI in Brazos COLA, has three boxes. We collect data every single month from the CPI, the same information that Social Security uses for their cost of living. Our data, which is the Consumer Price Index average of May to April, is the information that I use for proposed cost of living for Brazos County. With the weighted average CPI is 4.3%. Social Security income, their weighted average is 4.3%. Brazos County cost of living based on their merit, based on the cost of livings previously, is 4.8%. My proposed 4% cost of living is sufficient enough, I believe. With this 4% cost of living that I am proposing, it will increase the budget by $3.3 million. With this being said, the last several years, the, the positions that have not been filled are paid up max. This last year, we estimated it was about $7 million, those dropped back down to fund balance. So with this 3.3%, I do believe we're able to afford it. With this being said, I do think that our priority at this moment is our employees. As we continue going forward, making this team a better place, and making sure that we are able to retain great employees, as well as their experience as a plus. I do know that City Association has proposed our budget. They're doing a 3% cost of living and 1% increase based on their market evaluations, which we're not able to do that, because we're not on the same system as they are. We're on a group and staff. Hope in the future, we're able to align our systems together. At this point, is there any questions? I want to take, I want to breathe right quick.
Take a deep breath. Commissioners, Commissioner Nettles?
So, do you know what they propose Social Security COLA is for 2026?
They do not support that until... They do not support that until October, November, I'm sorry, they do not present that until November because their Social Security is effective January of each year, while ours takes effect in October. So they have not published the 2026 cost of living yet.
I think their proposed cost of living is 2.6%. What about the federal employees? Do you know what theirs proposal is for 2026?
I sure don't know, sir.
That's zero. What about state of Texas employees?
Do not know.
So, the legislature proposed a $10,000 annual salary increase for active, full-time state employees.
Is that a one-time, is that a one-time increase?
I don't know what the final budget was, but that was what the proposal, it was a one-time increase. So, what I'd like to see is some alternatives.
Okay. Do you have suggestions? Because at this point, we're on a group and step chart, so it's either...
Well, so...
A percentage, or...
Percentage or a flat rate, one-time COLA?
For the flat rate COLA, it will not work on the group and step chart.
Right. That's why we need to change it.
And with the Oracle system, it might not be able to handle that, and that's where I will have to take HR's expertise on the HCM system, see if it's able to work with it for this next year.
Well, if not, then we can fire Oracle and get something else. That's ridiculous. We're a big customer, they ought to be able to adopt to our needs, not us constrict to their software inabilities.
Agreed. But we have invested millions of dollars into Oracle, and so I don't know what the court would like to invest more into.
Well, if we've invested that much money, that means we're a big client, and they ought to respond to our request.
I'm not understanding how Oracle and our step group system...
That's how this is, so once, that's where all of our information lives, right? And so, it's based, how can I put it in IT's word? I'm going to let HR, Jennifer, explain the HCM system real quick.
Where to begin?
Step group?
It's very limited. We set up Oracle based off of Brazos County's structure, our system. So if you're talking about changing that structure, that's going to take time from HR, as well as IT, to be able to make the system do what we are wanting it to do. And at this time, there would not be time for us to be able to look into something like that. One-time merits or one-time incentive pays are things we have been looking into, and we do believe the system might be able to do that in the future, but it is not currently set up to handle that.
So due to our current setup...
So Oracle is...
And with Oracle...
Right, it's Oracle, yeah, right. Because of our step, this is what Oracle is only able to produce because of our step group system.
Correct. And we have the group and step, and so therefore, COLA would be an across-the-board change.
So it's really not Oracle, it's our terrible system.
And add the time constraint we're under to pass this budget, correct?
Correct.
So we have all the facts. But Commissioner Nettles, points are well taken. We just need to understand the timeline and the constraints that we can work under, and the amount of time we have in front of us.
Right. There are, I have been trying to work on a system for a one-time payout for merit policy. Of course, it's taking a little longer than what I hoped. Instead of putting it towards position, it goes to the person. That way, it's a one-time payout instead of continuing being put onto the salary benefits. But until I can get that worked out, it takes time.
Commissioners?
You know, every day, we expect great things from our employees, and we hear back from, from people that we represent about the great things our employees are doing.
Absolutely.
And I think it's vitally necessary that when we look at cost of living raises, that we look at it seriously, because we want to be able to keep these great employees that are doing these great things every day.
I agree. And the information that I bring to you is data-driven. I'm not doing the hearsays, I'm not doing the, you know, the communications between the public. I'm bringing you true data, and that's the only thing I can support, is just data.
Right. And I agree with Commissioner Brown, because I hear from department heads where they know that they have really great employees, but based on our, our system and our processes and what the county can afford, you know, sometimes they bring in really great employees, they get them trained, and then they get lured away just because we cannot be competitive on salaries. And I understand the restrictions in terms of budgeting and how we, how we get our income, i.e. from our taxes. But it also impacts the work, the works that our residents, our citizens, expect for the county to do. So we're kind of in a catch-22. Our citizens expect for the county to work for them. Then we have the employees who work for us to work, to produce, to do the work. But then we can't compensate them or keep them, and so we're, so we're in this vicious cycle of, how do we compensate the people to do the work that the citizens require of us? So, and then of course, there's Oracle.
I'm going into this budget process with the, with that intention that we're, I'm reviewing every single nook and cranny corner, turn, reevaluating all the needs once, and I will bring you a budget that will make you proud.
How much could we save if we got rid of Oracle?
I, then you're going to have to invest in a lot of pens and papers and ledger and all that good stuff.
And you'll need more staff.
You know, Oracle's a great system, you know, every financial system is a headache, and the county auditor has worked her tail off to bring us a system that controls what we can handle and around the, between, try to make everybody happy. You're not going to make everybody happy, trust me. But it is a good system.
And there is no perfect software for anything.
No, but you have the court's commitment that we will work with our time constraint to make sure our compensation retention...
Agree.
Turns into great performance from team members. Commissioner Nettles, anything else you need to, would like to add?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Payne?
At this point, I would like to ask if there's any department heads and elected officials. I know there's a sign-up sheet running around, but at this point, while that's being passed to Judge Cassell, I am going to read a letter from Judge Hillburn, who was not able to attend, and so he wanted me to read his memo for the record. At this point, I'll pass it out to the court, because he sent it to me earlier this morning. And Commissioner Nettles, I'll send it to you immediately after. This is from Judge Hillburn. "I am in support, I am in support of including a cost-of-living adjustment to Brazos County employees for the fiscal year 2026 Brazos County budget. I apologize, I cannot be at the workshop in person on July 15, 2025, but I had a pre-planned family event I needed to attend. In your responsibilities to the county, you have three things to always keep in front of your mind. One, taxpayers. Two, the county employees. And three, the services provided. Ideally, you could always do the most for each of these things. Unfortunately, at times, the three are at odds with each other. If you cut taxes, you may not have funds to pay a fair wage to the employees in order to provide the facilities and services the citizens of the county need. If you raise taxes, you may be taking more money for the pocket, from the pocket of the taxpayer than you need to. If you do not pay the employees a fair salary, employees may leave Brazos County employment and seek a higher-paying job, thereby not being able to keep providing the high-quality services the county currently provides. If you pay out lame-dish salaries to an employee, to the employees, you may be taking more money from the pocket of the taxpayers than you need to. If you do not put money toward facility services and you're taking care of the citizens of the county, all who depend on the services provided by the county. If you put too much money toward facilities and services, you're taking away from the taxpayer, as well as the salaries and benefits of the employees. Every budget cycle, these issues are weighed by the court in making budgetary decisions for the upcoming year. These are not easy decisions. This year, I supported cost of living for Brazos County employees. In the past few years, costs have skyrocketed. You fill it in the cost of goods and supplies the county purchases. You see it personally in the goals and the goods and services you purchase for yourself and your families. So do the employees of Brazos County. You set the salaries and keep the good employees of Brazos County working for Brazos County and not looking for other employment, because the county is not paying a wage where they can continue to take care of their families. Approving a COLA in this budget does not just, does not just make the employees happy, it keeps the services provided to the citizens of Brazos County at the best and highest level. I do not believe a merit raise among departments is appropriate at this time, as I think the best way to help all county employees is to adjust the salaries of all county employees to account for the higher cost of living. Thank you for all you do for Brazos County, and thank you for the time in considering the cost of living in the upcoming budget. David Hillburn." I do want to make one, one comment. I did not go over the merit policy. In the past, we had a merit policy which was awarded to the person in a position, and if that person left that position, it remains in the position. For 2026, with the 4% cost of living, I am recommending not to do a merit, as we're trying to restructure how things are done here, and so it'd be wise for us to stay with the cost of living and revisit the merit at a future date when we have it situated, have a better system.
Good.
Okay? At this point, Judge Cassell, I'd like you to start calling up department heads and our elected officials.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Thank you.
First on the list, Brian Baker with the DA.
Judge, are these one-minute, are they allowed one minute apiece, or what's the...
Not advised.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you guys for giving me a second. Jarvis is currently trying, the More Cabinet mass shooting that happened in our community over in the 85th with Kyle Hawthorne, so he's asked me to stand in and make a few comments. So, he wishes he could be here. I read an article today that said in June alone, the cost of food is up 3%. The cost of eggs is still 27% more expensive than it was a year ago right now.
Yep.
And so I just want you guys to remember that I know what you're doing, and you are stewards of our community, and you're stewards of our funds, but the 1,058 or so employees are hurting right now. And so we are asking you guys to make a consideration of cost of living, and understanding that those people, that 1,058 people, is comprised of, over 50% of that is law enforcement, or law enforcement adjacent, or infrastructure. So honestly, these are the people that change and directly contribute to the quality of life in Brazos County. These are the people that we need to invest in. I know Brian and College Station, I know now that College Station is on record that they're going to do a cost of living. I've talked to Brian. I ask you guys to reach out to your folks. I know they are all considering between 3 and 4% cost of living. I hope that moves the needle that we fall in line with the workers for the city of College Station and the city of Brian. I think, I also want you guys to understand what that means. Cost of living, we throw around big numbers like 3.3 million, right? But for my staff, or Jarvis's staff, but our folks, our staff, so the people, maybe not the lawyers, as a mean, would, this would increase their check by $84 before taxes. I mean, I want you guys to realize that that is not going to cover the difference of how much it costs me to buy fruit at Costco right now for my two young boys. So, this is, it sounds like a lot, but in reality, I wish I could stand up here and ask you guys and tell you guys that the people I work with in this county for the last 22 years deserve more than that. Finally, I think it's important for me to say, and I think every elected official that comes up here from hereon will echo this, but we are losing people. Brazos County is losing absolutely quality human beings to the surrounding counties. I am losing lawyers on a rate that I hate to admit, because Grimes County and Robertson County and the surrounding counties can pay lawyers more money than we're paying lawyers, who are sitting here trying cases where mass shooters try to ruin our lives. All of us in this room, if we are affected by violent crime or preyed upon, are going to require and ask of this law enforcement community and these folks to stand up for them. And so, I'm asking you guys to seriously consider, do everything you can to put this cost of living in the forefront of the budget in y'all's minds and hearts. I would stand up here and absolutely ask you for merit, because what I can tell you guys, the last part of that is, I'm losing staff as well. And I have no way, because of the group and step, which I'm going to ask you guys over and over again to fix, because of that, there is no way without merit for me to get those people up to a wage that's not going to put them in a situation where they're poached. So I, I'm literally looking at you guys knowing that I'm asking for cost of living for everybody that works in this county in hopes that that helps us keep some folks. But knowing that I'm going to lose folks because we're not going to seriously consider merit, and I can't get those people up. So I thank you guys for the sentiment that I've heard today. I look forward to hopefully being able to tell our folks that they're at least going to get cost of living.
Ms. Baker, thank you for stepping in for Jarvis. Judge John Brick?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Judge. Good to see you, Judge. I'll be brief, I'll give you most of your minute back. I just wanted to echo what Nina said and what Mr. Baker has said already, and I'm sure what each of these department heads are going to say is that we're in favor of this, of this COLA. We need it at this time, I think. It is, I think Nina said it best, it's not a luxury, it is a necessity at this time. Our employees work hard. I know I can turn to anybody, any of these departments that are here represented today, and if I have a problem in court and something's happened, and it affects some other department, or some other department has some say with it, I can talk to them and get something done right away. We've got hard-working people, is my point, and we want to keep those people. I want to keep the people. I want to keep my people. I know I've got a very small department, but I'd like to keep them and reward them for their hard work, even though this isn't a reward, not even getting up to living wage is what I heard today, I think. So, these, everybody here works hard, and I'm asking for all the employees of Brazos County, because it's every department that I've ever come into contact with, if I have a problem, I call them and they, they work on it right away. Thank you.
Judge, Judge, I want to add some, something if I could. I know, I know we leave, we lose good people to surrounding counties. The salary is not the only thing. The cost of living in these other counties is, is absolutely significant. You know, you can buy a home in Grimes County or any of the surrounding counties for much less than you can buy it here, and, and the local taxes are a lot lower than they are here. So it's, it's, it's a twofold problem.
Sure.
So...
It is. And I acknowledge that. We do have some that work out of county and drive in and work here, too. And we have vice versa, I understand that. So I do recognize that. I don't really envy your position, but, but I would ask you to, and thank you for considering all of these options, or what Nina's provided here for you.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of what Nina's provided.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Brick. Next on the agenda, Eric Caldwell with IT.
Good afternoon, Judge. Commissioners, I don't know that I'm going to be able to add a lot to this. I will start by saying that I am also not in favor of a merit. I have always found merit to be kind of a double-edged sword. With our group and step program, it means that fewer than half of, half of your staff even qualify for a merit, or that is to say, the money's doled out as merit, can only be stretched so far. And I've always found it difficult to pick those staff members that deserve that merit more than the others, because I've long felt like all of my staff do a tremendous job. And so, if, if not advocating for the merit means that the chances of you granting a COLA this year are that much greater, then that's my, that's my position. Again, you've already heard about the cost of groceries going up. Commissioner Brown, I appreciate you mentioning property taxes, because, you know, I'm sure I'm not alone when I say that my property taxes have gone up 10% every year now, despite my protestations. They just continue to go up. Vacancies. I have not had a full complement of, of staff now in six years. I, I used to be able to recruit out of A&amp;M, out of University of Houston, other universities around the state. I've gotten to the point now where I just can't seem to compete, and I cannot get staff and keep staff. I, I have vacancies that I just can't seem to get filled. And it is my hope that with time, if we can, can get a COLA for a few years running, maybe we can get back to where we are competitive with the, with other employers around here. So, thank you for your consideration.
Eric, I did, I did make a motion that we defund the appraisal district, but because of state rules, something happened that, you know, didn't happen. So anyway.
I'll second that motion.
Well, Eric is sort of a double-edged sword, because taxes...
Well, Eric is sort of a double-edged sword, because taxes also, the county, that's how we fund some of the county, that's how we fund some of your salaries.
Well, that's how you're going to fund part of this COLA, my property taxes, so.
Oh, yours and, yours and yours, yours alone.
Thank you, Eric.
You will be paying for it all. No, just kidding.
Next up, Constable Jeff Reeves.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. Don't have a lot to add, so I'm not going to be here long, but I want to echo, everything what Nina said was spot on, and, and the others that have stepped up here. And you're exactly right, Commissioner, the, it's, the cost of living here, especially in Brazos County, has really gone up. You know, we're starting to get compared to the Austin area and stuff, and that's really off the hook over there. But my deputies have some great ones, and I don't want to lose them. And of course, in the future, we want to be able to hire good quality people. But, I, you know, and I'll, and I'll say this, I'm not asking for a raise personally, I'm not talking about the cost of living for me, or my chief deputy, or my, my clerk, but I am asking for a 10% raise for my deputies this year, just to get them up to snuff with local law enforcement, because we're one of the lowest paid agencies now in Brazos County. And I was going to ask for extra personnel, but I chose to ask for the 10% raise, which I would fold into 4% COLA, so six with a four, is what I'd do in that situation. But at the very, very least, please, the 4% COLA, I can't say enough about, with the cost of living, the way things are going up, these employees need it, we all need it, and I think it's the right thing to do. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Constable. Linda Richardson.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, and I will have to say, I think I work for the best county, because I think y'all have really tried to take care of us in the past, and I do appreciate it. I'm not here to talk numbers, I just want to talk about people. And I wanted to just, and I'm going to make this brief, because I talk pretty fast anyway, but I just wanted to say a little bit about, I think, what our staff does. Because I think a lot of times in the community, and maybe people don't see what we do, but we currently supervise juveniles in detention for arrests, for evading arrests, burglary, burglar vehicle aggravated assault, aggravated sexual assault of a child, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, violation of court orders. And it's difficult to stat, for staff to work in these environments, as these juveniles can be quite difficult. We have limited resources at our disposal, except for placing these juveniles in their rooms when they place staff and other juveniles in danger. Often, while attempting to work with these juveniles, our staff are assaulted or injured. The staff are also dealing with difficult parents, not just difficult juveniles. We're working with school officials, or schools, mental health services, and other community resources for these juveniles. Many of our staff have young families, and they're trying to support them, and the cost of liv, living is consistently going up. I think that a cost of living raise is a small ask for these officers and the things that they have to do. We're supervising over 300 kids in the community, and I just think that a lot of times, you don't know maybe what we are doing in juvenile, but I think it's difficult to hire staff for this field, so we must stay competitive. And I definitely agree with everything that Nina and everyone else has said. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda. Dana Zachary.
Please, I, Katie, to the loudest of these, and I, Katie, to the loudest of these. Good afternoon. I don't have a lot to add. We've had great speakers who have expressed their concern.
What department are you with?
I am with the Associate Court One and Specialty Court. I'm also the Indigent Defense Office, and I run the EM programming and monitoring.
Okay.
We do have great employees that work for the county, and it's important that we keep the employees that we have. In considering this COLA, I think it's very important that you consider it. I'm aware of an employee in my office and other employees throughout the county that are having to work two jobs to make ends meet, and I think it's important that they should have a livable salary from working for the county full-time. It's important that when we need to hire someone, that we are competitive and able to hire a qualified recipient for these jobs, because we spend a lot of time training them, we spend, and, and, you know, loyalty is, I'm old school, I come back from that. Loyalty is important, and I know a number of the department heads, we do what we can for our employees aside from their salaries, because we know that we are a little bit underpaid from other counties, but I think it's really important that we do what we can for all of our employees and keep qualified employees that are loyal to this county. So I would hope that you would consider the COLA. The merit is kind of a, a bit of a double-edged sword, because it makes us choose one, for my department, how it always works out, is I have to choose one employee over everybody else, and that's very difficult when I know that they're all giving 100% to their job. So, I leave that in your hands, but I, I hope that you will seriously consider the COLA.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Commissioner Watson, I'll do a better job. Judge Roy Brantley, Brazos County Court Law Two.
What?
I didn't, it was abbreviated, her position, so I apologize.
May I play the court?
Judge.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much for listening to the people. You are the stewards of our finances, of all of the taxes of Brazos County. I know you know that, but you're also stewards of the employees, and we appreciate that. And as a, a department head with my employees, I had an experience in my short term thus far as judge, county court law number two, I lost an employee because she got a better job, paying job, in a different county. And it was a court reporter, and that was very problematic, because I could not compete with what she was getting. By God's grace, I found a court reporter, and she's driving in from out of county, because I couldn't get one around here. So, I highly recommend that this, these Commissioners, you would approve what Nina has offered up, as far as merit pay. I worked for Congressman Pogue one time out of Waco. He said, "A little bit of something's better than all of nothing." We need a little bit of something. We need more. I'd love to stand up here and tell you what all we need, but what we do need is this. The employees need this, and so we would humbly request that you would pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Next, Judge Amanda Matsky, County Court Law Number One.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come up and just share a couple of things with you. I know others have pointed out about surrounding governments and what they're, they're paying their employees. I also want to point out, we're not just competing with the surrounding governmental agencies, we're also competing with the private sector. And the fact is, is government salaries are probably never going to be as high as what the private sector is, so we are competing with them as well. We can't give bonuses like the private sector can. We can't go in and say, "Hey, we, we've had a rough week, you all go home for the rest of the day." We can't do that as a government agency. So, I think this cost of living is very important, not only so that everybody can make their ends meet and not have to work two jobs, but also it, it keeps morale up, and it keeps our employees happy. And one thing that I wanted to point out, Judge Brick and I, and Judge Brantley, we're under a different salary system, so we in no way are benefiting from any cost of living. So I'm not up here, and neither are they, advocating for ourselves in this. We're under a legislative system that's separate. But we are taxpayers too, and I recognize as a taxpayer what I'm asking, and I am asking you to support a cost of living raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Next, Kevin Stewart, Brazos County Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, thank you. I'm here in support of the COLA that's been presented, and just like a few others, I can't really say it any better, there's, the employees that work here, I think everybody's in agreement are great, and that just goes without saying. I'd like to put a, a little bit different perspective on it as well, for some that may not understand, because in my opinion, even though this involves spending money, I believe it's a fiscally conservative, good business decision to make. You know, sometimes you spend money now and invest in people who are going to be future leaders and running departments, and making decisions that actually save taxpayers money, instead of not doing something now and you end up paying for it later, and maybe you have not as qualified applicants. And so just a, a different perspective that I know that you all understand, and that maybe will help that, and hopefully you make the decision to, to go with the recommendation. But I know that this court has always supported the employees here, and y'all have been amazing, and so I don't have any doubt, I just wanted to come and give a different perspective on it, and thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for that perspective.
Julie Anderson, Medical.
Oh, my gosh. Absolutely.
It's an, it's an honor to be here, as always. I've worked for the county, and it's been an honor to work for the county for almost 28 years. I'm here really to support my co-professionals that we are in support of COLA. I'm neutral on the merit. A lot of people, you hold their work lives in your hands, you do, and that's a tremendous responsibility, and so we're just here to represent that to you, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Wood, Public Defender's Office.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration on this issue. I, I don't have a lot to add either, but I did want to reiterate one thing that Judge Brick mentioned, which is how effective each and every one of the departments in Brazos County has been. The Public Defender's Office came online and, at the very tail end of 2022, and it was the first time, I think, in a long time that Brazos County had created a new department. And if it weren't for the, the good people in IT, and in HR, and in the Auditor's Office, and Nina, then we would have absolutely floundered. Because when I went to law school, I was promised that there would be no math, but it turns out that here I am, I'm a lawyer that has to work with numbers. In the Public Defender's Office specifically, we're also doing good work. Our, our employees are, are working with some of the least in Brazos County. Some of the people who, a lot of, a lot of the county would rather forget about, or, or look away from, I think are the people that, that we wind up serving. We, we struggle and we strive to get people processed through the court system quickly so that we can do our part in reducing jail population, and we plug in our clients with services that are local, and that are critical to meeting some of their very basic needs. And without good people, there's no way that we can succeed at providing those services and succeed at meeting those goals. And so I, I wanted to come up here just for a moment and speak on behalf of all the employees in the county, and specifically for the employees in the Public Defender's Office, and just ask you, please, 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 go ahead and approve this, this cost of living increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
Nathan, you brought up about math. I just want you to know, I was president of my Algebra One class for three years in a row. We need a stand-up club, and Brian. Court calls Karen McQueen, County Clerk.
Judge, Commissioners, my fellow elected officials and the department heads and our judges have pretty much said what I had planned on saying. I don't have a big turnover in my office. We have a great staff, they work hard. I do not like merits, because everybody deserves to have something in my office, I feel like. So I'm asking you to support the COLAs. If you could give more, that would be great. I know my employees would really appreciate it. I hear them talking about the grocery store, car insurance, house insurance going up with the catastrophes that just happened. I wouldn't be surprised if our home insurance go up more than they already have. So I just ask that you keep that in mind, and, and I support the COLA. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Court calls Parthena Banier, County Engineer, and I'm going to need help with that, Parthena.
I just call her East Texas.
I'm here still.
As, as am I.
You're whispering my name all the time. Yeah.
These fun last names.
Well, yours is easier than mine, but, you know. Prathana Banier, Brazos County Engineer. Just to give you a little perspective from Road and Bridge, it's the same tape, same broken record, I'm going to repeat myself regardless. Our entry level flaggers make about 1844 an hour, and there, despite that, we have private contractors paying them 22, 23 to 28, you know, per hour, and with bonuses, and they have, you know, they can work longer hours, and so on and so forth, we lose people left and right. It's a constant problem that we, our department has faced for a very long time. We also actually struggle to find qualified workers. I've, I've talked to Judge about this issue, that we've been trying to find a qualified person for a while. Same thing, that the labor market is too competitive for us to make, you know, our offers to be, to find the right person with the right qualification, and so on and so forth. The list is going on. Salary is one of those, you know, outstanding issues that we cannot really, you know, come around. And so last year, the court did grant 5% COLA, and we are very grateful for that, and I, I hope that the court considers, again, for this year, a 4% to 5% COLA at least. And I, I recognize to be, you know, fiscally responsible is a very good virtue to have, but personnel investment is critical, it's a strategic investment. We can provide customer service. I know Commissioner Bentley is big on customer service, and, you know, we are lock and step with that, but to have effective customer service, we need the right people to get the right wages, you know? So, to retain the personnel that we have and to maintain, and moving forward, you know, absorb the growth of this area for any infrastructure needs that we have, we need the people, and people need to get paid. And so, you know, it's my request to the court to please consider a COLA for this year as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Parthena. Katie Connor with the County Auditor.
Well, that's a big stack of paperwork.
It's scary. You mentioned math. As County Auditor, I try to provide a resource to Commissioners' Court, and so Commissioner Nettles, based on your, your questions earlier, I tried to do a search on what the average state salary is, and AI is coming up with from 2021, $5,914 a month, approximately $20, $70,000 a year, a 10%, excuse me, you said $10,000 one-time increase? Which is...
Yes, that's, that's what they proposed. I don't know what the final state budget improved.
Like I said, I looked up, and AI didn't offer any, but a $10,000 propos, excuse me, $10,000 per year proposed increase would have been a 14% increase, based on the average from 2021. Obviously, those numbers can't be correct, but I wanted to show you that it can be difficult sometimes to get comparable data.
Exactly.
From year to year, and so if, I am sure the Budget Office will try to further attempt to get federal increase amounts, state increase, State of Texas increase amounts, and provide that information to you. With regards to, I had a flashback to 2020. We went live with Oracle. And, and some of these people are laughing, because they were here with payroll part of Oracle, January 1st, 2021. At the time, the Commissioners' Court, the group and step was active, and that was what we chose to implement. Oracle has many, many, many customers in the United States. However, we are one of their few, if not first, governmental entities that they were trying to get their business. We only had two different software companies complete the RFP. I am more than happy to discuss Oracle with you, if you would like to at some point, to figure out how to possibly do a flat amount, if you want to do that. Oracle has that capabilities. We just did not choose to go that. We just did not choose to go that route at the time. We pay, and I, I know y'all can't hear it, but I can hear Jennifer back here going, "Uh-huh, uh-huh." So I don't, I don't think that I am being prejudiced. We had a committee that helped select that software at the time. And there are still options. One of the things that, and y'all are going to have a flashback here for a minute, too, the compensation study. One of the things that, the only way to get, you can get off group and step, not a problem. It'll take a year at least to get Oracle reconfigured to do ranges. But what ranges do you pick? Do you pick where they're currently at? Do you pick where they should be? How do you know what they should? Many, many, many questions that a compensation study could help answer. Now, I have to do both sides of that. We've had Brazos County, I've been here 30 years, right before, no, it was after I got here, Ray and Associates, Karen will remember, we had a compensation study and the Commissioners' Court chose not to implement it. So all I would offer on that is to, it would be better to plan to get off of the group and step chart and to configure Oracle or any payroll system and compensation system the way you would like it to. Plan the flexibility that you would like to have. And a compensation study could help at least get us to market. Okay? And then I also, and I will say this, I don't have a vested interest in the COLA. The district judges set my salary and I'm retiring in September, so I don't even have to worry about that.
But your staff?
But my staff does, yes. And, and most of my staff, well, several of them are actually eligible to retire, too. You don't want that. But they will still be here and the district judges set their salaries, too. So we usually, as a matter of fact, I have known, I haven't, you know, there's, you die on your, you pick the hill you're going to die on. And being even slightly different in some ways than Commissioners' Court, what Commissioners' Court chose to do their employees, wasn't a hill I wanted to die on. So I generally chose to follow what Commissioners' Court did if they had already decided for the public hearing that's required for County Auditor and their staff. And we'll have that situation again, whether, you know, we're up to, our statutes are a little different. But, and I do know that projected appraised value increases, we should be able to manage the actual dollar value associated with the 4% COLA.
Thank you. Katie, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nettles.
No questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Ms. Payne, before you close, so dealing with an antiquated system, trying to prove competitive compensation with retention and better performance? We can do all this with a COLA?
Yes, sir.
And come in with no new?
Come in with a no new revenue rate. That is my goal and it has been my goal since I, since this budget year has started in January. This is month, I already lost count, seventh, month seventh, I'm preparing the FY '26 budget.
Here, my hero. Thank you.
Let's wait till we adopt it.
Okay. But thank you from this court for the hard work, all the effort that your teams put into this, presentation, this workshop today.
Yes. Thank you. And I want to thank you for your time and it's not only, you said a team, I didn't expect...
Your A-man corner.
Well, we'll say this to all those that testified for the COLA. Thank you for putting the county first and your people that work with you to make this county do what it does. We're very appreciative.
As of today, I will be proposing a 4% cost of living in the working budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Payne, thank you. With that, it is 3:24. The workshop on the budget for Brazos County is now concluded.